I'd like to say good evening to everyone, and now I bring the order of the Culpeper County Planning Commission meeting for the month of March. We welcome you all here. The first order of business is approval of the agenda for tonight, commissioners.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise. The agenda has been approved. Second is the approval of the minutes from our February meeting. We received those in our packets. Chair entertaining motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, well, that has been approved, and those minutes will be put into the record. Now we move into our new business. Neil?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have renewal of Point of Fork Agricultural and Forestry District. Planning Commission will review the Point of Fork Agricultural and Forestry District, which expires in 2023 in accordance with Article AE of zoning ordinance. Commission will make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding whether the district should be continued, modified, or terminated. Now, I'll begin with reading recommendation from the Ag Forestry Committee. Dear Mr. Reeves, on January 26, 2023, Agricultural and Forestry District Advisory Committee met and reviewed the Point of Fork Agricultural and Forestry District. This district currently has three parcels enrolled consisting of 304.46 acres. To date, there's been no withdrawals from the district since the last renewal of 2015, and no voluntary withdrawals thus far during the current renewal or review period. After due consideration and discussion, the Agricultural and Forestry District Advisory Committee recommends to the Planning Commission that the district be renewed for another eight-year period. This decision is congruent with current zoning and future land use planning identified within the current Culpeper County Comprehensive Plan. We appreciate your consideration on this matter. Sincerely, Thomas O'Halloran.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good evening. On the screen, you see the Point of Fork Agriculture and Forestry District. It's made up entirely of three large tracts. It's certainly one of our smaller Ag and Forestry districts, but it is a viable district. It does have more than 200 acres, so it's a viable district. One of our newer districts, too, has not been around for a while. Last renewal was in 2015. If the Planning Commission sees fit the recommendation of approval for this for the Board, it would be potentially renewed for another eight years. As Neil mentioned, no parcels sought to withdraw from this district, which is good since it is just a total of 304 acres. Just a little bit of background, not necessarily for the commission, but for anybody else, but Ag and Forestry districts are established under Code of Virginia, and then in our local code, Article AE. They're initiated by local landowners on a voluntary basis. They're currently 400, or excuse me, not 400, 42,621 acres in the county today, so that's why this is a pretty small district and all. Mainly done as a preservation of Ag and Forests plan. They offer not any automatic enhancement to the property, but while the property owners are located or enrolled in the district, they are making a commitment to not develop their property in any intensive manner, including subdivision. Chairman, with that, staff certainly encourages the Planning Commission to recommend renewal for another eight-year period for this district. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to entertain them.
Okay. All right, Sam. Is there someone here to speak on behalf of this report?
No, and these, Mr. Chairman, don't have particular applicants, since there's usually multiple property owners involved, so they just, they... You are going to act as the applicant. We do have a public hearing, so you will need to open that, so...
Okay. And usually after the advisory committee meets on it, the person I'm sure has to go before them personally. Okay.
Yes, unless, if it's a single lot addition or withdrawal, then we would have a particular applicant.
All right. Okay. That being understood, we've had those in our packets and had a chance to review them. Any discussion on that, and the commissions? Not chair entertaining a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend renewal of the Point of Fork...
Mr. Chairman, we still need to open up. We still need a public hearing.
Oh, well, Sam, you just blew the whole thing out. Oh, and we need the microphones also? All right. And even my microphone. I don't think I have my microphone on. Okay. Okay. At this time, it is March, right? Okay? And you know why this is happening? Because I didn't stop and do, to recognize or acknowledge Women's History Month, and today is Women's History Day, right? So we got women that making history all over the place in here, okay? And to all those of us who know them, we recognize that today. Now, we can move on. The public hearing is now open. Is it anyone who would like to speak in reference to the withdrawal requests? Okay. Then, we now declare the public hearing closed. Now, commissioners.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move for the renewal of Point of Fork Agriculture and Forestry District.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise. We will send it to the Board with the recommendation of approval. Okay. Second?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Next on the agenda is North Ridge Estate Subdivision, 31 lots. It's a request by Dan Ryan Builders, Mid-Atlantic LLC, and Christopher Fisher for approval of a 31-lot subdivision for single-family dwellings. The Planning Commission shall review the subdivision plan to determine its conformance with the standards contained in Article 4 and Article 5 of Appendix B, which is the subdivision ordinance of the County of Culpeper. The property's owned R1 Residential and is located off Chestnut Fort Route 685. It's found within the Stevensburg Magisterial District, and it contains 31.8 acres. It's found on Tax Map 31, Parcel 73B.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the parcel that's highlighted in red on the screen is the parcel that's seeking a 31-lot subdivision. It should look familiar to you all, or some of you at least. It went through a rezoning process not too long ago, and it was successful. The Board of Supervisors did rezone this parcel to R1, which is your single-family residential zoning district. The applicant has submitted a subdivision plan in accordance with subdivision ordinance, Article 4 and 5 of the subdivision ordinance. This is the layout that the applicant has chosen. It is a cluster design. You do see a couple of open space areas there to the east and then to the south, and then a little bit to the southwest as well. Just to the south, you see that subdivision. If you remember, one of the biggest things when we did the rezoning was they didn't want to connect. At least several residents that lived in North Ridge, which is to the south, did not want to connect. We have a subdivision that does not connect. It's connected to 685, which will be the primary entrance off of Chestnut Fork Road. There has been some discussion with VDOT. VDOT has reviewed the plan, and in particular, the entrance, VDOT is recommending a turn-in taper, or at least a taper, coming into that entrance, and that may be something we want to discuss further tonight. The staff does support VDOT's recommendation on that. What you do see to the south, coming off of the Stormwater Access, is a trail that was proffered as part of the rezoning. That trail is pedestrian-only, but would potentially access the North Ridge subdivision to the south, which would allow pedestrians or users of that to connect to a sidewalk system that could come out to Ira Hoffman, and really right across from Culpeper County High School and the middle school. You see two other future roads there that spur off to the west. You have a future Road A and a future Road B. Those roads do stub into the county of Culpeper property. Right now, there's not a designated use or a planned development for that property, but those roads are important for future development and do help with connectivity as well once that property does develop. And just keep in mind, the property that the county does have does have access to 229, so in the future, there could be some connectivity to whatever develops on the county property with those future roads there. You're looking at, I think, 20,000 square foot lots, or just about 12,000, 20,000 square foot lots, which is your clustered standard for R1. The lots do meet that standard. Soil and Water Conservation District, one of the reviewing agencies, did look at it. The plan has shown the erosion and sediment control plan does meet the minimum standards for that, and we do have an approval letter as part of the board docs package. One outstanding approval still is Stormwater. I mean, the applicant can potentially fill us in on where they stand today with that, but we do need final DEQ approval before we would approve of the final subdivision plans, or at least upon a final land disturbance permit prior to construction of the subdivision. Mr. Chairman, there are other proffer considerations. You have 100-foot setback with landscaping along 685. The applicant has met the intent of that proffer, and that's shown in the plan. The pedestrian trails I mentioned to the south, there is access to the county property, which was also proffered, and then the design itself, which comes solely off of 685. There is a cash proffer for schools, but that won't take place with the subdivision, will take place after the homes are, or as the homes are being built. There's a cash proffer for each lot. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions. Staff believes that the Planning Commission is in a position to recommend approval conditionally. If you see fit tonight, we do need to gather that final Stormwater approval, and then we need to work out the concern with VDOT to see what the Planning Commission recommends on that. We do have applicants, applicants here, and their engineer as well, with legacy engineering, and they can answer any questions, and this also is a public hearing. Mr. Chairman, so you'll need to open that as well. Just keep in mind, the Planning Commission's role with the subdivision is a little bit different than a rezoning. The rezoning has been approved, so the zoning is established. Your role, as a reviewing agency basically at this point, is the ministerial role, so you're looking for conformance to the subdivision ordinance, and then ultimately make a recommendation, and then it ultimately gets approved or denied by the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sam. Okay. If any of the commissions like to ask this staff anything right now, we'll go ahead and open that up before we open the public hearing on this situation. Ms. Thornhill?
Yes, I have a question. It says, it's kind of loose language, that VDOT is recommending. It doesn't say they have to, they need to consider. Do they have to put a taper in or not?
Yeah, so the warrant analysis that Legacy did on behalf of the applicant suggests that that one is not required by VDOT minimum standards. VDOT is recommending that based on, I guess, some language that is, I would say, subjective to some degree, and Legacy certainly can chime in when they come up to the podium as well. In staff's opinion, I'd support VDOT's assertion for some type of pull-off area, whether it's a taper or a turn-in taper, to get into the subdivision, mainly because this is a, for secondary road for Culpeper, it does have a higher traffic count. It won't require a left-turn lane by any means, and I'm not sure we would have the right-of-way there to do that anyway, but there is enough room, in staff's opinion, to put in a taper coming into that subdivision.
Yeah, because I thought the edge had a ditch in it.
There could, there is, and there would be...
If you start to taper over, and you don't, and you fall, you could almost like go down in the ditch, but...
If it's constructed properly, there shouldn't be no safety...
No, if they would put one in, is what I'm saying. They should put one in. It seems as though with the on-site physical constraints, it's kind of narrow there, too.
Just keep in mind, this is not, it's very similar to Kite Acres, which was approved not too long ago on Ira Hoffman. In that particular case, a turn lane is going to be installed, was recommended by VDOT, was not actually required, but was recommended. Staff supported that, and the Board of Supervisors ultimately approved that. We had a similar situation on a subdivision, a little bit smaller than this actually, on 211. That was a few years ago, the same situation. It was not required by the warrant analysis, but was recommended and provided a much safer situation for those entering that subdivision. And staff believes that's the same case for this. You have 31 lots. It's not insignificant. You know, the traffic bill is coming in now, so...
Okay, and I didn't recognize the speed through there either.
I don't know if it's posted. If it is, it's going to be at least 45. It may even be unposted out there, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
Okay. Thanks. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Contending on the taper, I noticed in VDOT's letter of, I think, the 16th of February, they noted that in earlier submissions, the applicant had indicated a 200-foot taper. In the submission that we've got now, it's down to 100-foot taper, and VDOT had asked for an explanation as to why the change. So if it's up to the applicant on whether or not to put a taper in, can the applicant decide how big the taper is going to be, or is there a VDOT standard as to how big that taper needs to be, and does staff have a view on that?
Mr. Chairman, to Commissioner Price, I'm going to let the applicant elaborate on that a little bit more, but I do believe the applicant was headed towards that direction, the latter direction, because of some concerns they had from VDOT's recommendation, so... But I'm going to let the applicant address that in further detail, but I will share that we do support some sort of taper, if possible, for that subdivision, so...
Okay. And a couple of other things, if I could, Mr. Chairman. So in terms of the access, right now, there's just one way in and out, and I note that we've got a couple of future entrances from 229. So are there any concerns, or have any concerns been voiced from emergency response units about getting in and out of there if there's only one entrance, and would we need another one sooner than the development on the other property to make sure we have two ways in and out?
No, and the connectivity requirements are certainly met with the future stub outs. Who knows when those will actually be connected to 229, so understand the concern there, but we actually have much greater density subdivisions on a single entrance than 31 lots in the county.
I see.
And they seem to function well, so...
Okay. And then, just one final thing. I noticed that the design calls for, well, there are no sidewalks. It's just like a shoulder and a ditch, and if you look at North Ridge that's adjacent to it, there's sidewalks, curb and gutter, and part of that is closest to Ira Hoffman. As you get into the interior, you just have like a walking path and a ditch without the curb and gutter and sidewalk. So is it up to the applicant in the county to choose which way they want to go?
No, and in this case, that plan, the plan will be amended to add sidewalks.
Oh, and curb and gutter, okay.
Not necessarily curb and gutter, but sidewalks.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Yes.
I just had a couple of questions. Sam, does the improvements there along the frontage, is the right-of-way and the frontage improvements work with the future comp plan and the future plan development there? In other words, could they not provide full frontage improvements along the whole road and pave that area, and then just stripe out the improvements?
So Commissioner Kilby, that's a great question. We don't know what the future road looks like for 685 right now. So right now, there are no immediate plans. There's no comp plan designation to improve that road, so it would be tough to have the applicant plan or prepare for something that's not known right now, but that's a good question.
Okay. And then, the other question I had was related to the, I guess, in terms of the access and the open space that goes to the Stormwater Management Pond. It looks like the access road, if I'm not mistaken, goes onto both lots. Is that correct? So like, if you're a homeowner on the side of your house, there's going to be an access road?
That's the way I understand it, too, and it does look like that, and it's certainly clearly labeled as a Stormwater Access, and then actually, that's how you would access the pedestrian trail as well that comes off of that access, too. So it would need to remain open for that purpose, for the pedestrian access, too.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking more along the lines, I know there's an easement there, but whether it's create a separate outlot parcel so you have additional space in between, you widen that area so it's not on the individual lot, because then it could potentially put some sort of burden on the homeowners.
Yeah, and we certainly could create, you know, and that's a great point, and I think that the applicant could. I don't know how the geometry, what they have to work with there, but they should be able to use the open space if they needed to shift the geometry of the lot to create an actual pipe stem there if it's not there already, so...
That's a dry pond, is that correct?
I think so, yes.
Okay. And then, was there an environmental study done as part of the project?
Not other than the normal erosion and sediment control, but not a separate environmental study. They did, they do have the areas as far as the wetlands and the flood plain delineated, and there is some on the property there to the south.
I'm just wondering if, like, back where the pond is, if there's any aquatic plant material, anything that extends beyond the perennial stream?
I'm not...
Or they're going to cross it with the channel, so I assume they're going to have a culvert underneath of the channel, or underneath the sidewalk or trail that crosses down through there, or how that's actually being done, and any permitting that would be required?
I would, Mr. Kilby, I would defer that to the applicant as far as a question there, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hello, Sam. I'm just curious, you know, if they need to revise the entrance, add sidewalks, and they don't have all agency approvals, why this is before us this evening?
So they do have the erosion and sediment control approval, the VDOT approval is more of a recommendation. The base minimum standards are met. Stormwater approval actually is not required under the preliminary plan or process from DEQ, so...
Okay.
And it will be required before they get a land disturbance permit, so...
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, Sam, relative to the question that Doug just asked, we could put a condition on here as saying that you have to have DEQ approval before this thing gets approved?
Yeah, and the reason why it's not required is because our ordinance needs a little help. We have a unique process here in the fact that the applicant, since this is less than 50 lots, has chosen to do a preliminary and final plan all in one shot. We have a final plan that needs some work still, but it runs through the preliminary plan process according to our code, which is Article 4, and Article 4 does not call out DEQ, unfortunately, as an approval for that, but we do need that, no matter what, whether our ordinance says we do or not, prior to any land disturbance permit, because they are a Stormwater Authority for the county, so...
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, good. I appreciate the questions that we've presented thus far, so it gives the applicant, before they come up, they'll be able to address if it's something that's there that needs to be addressed, that they have that opportunity ahead of time, and would shorten hopefully the rest of it, so... But at this time, we're going to ask the applicant or representative for the applicant Give you full name for the record, and since it's Women's History Month, we let the ladies go first. No, I'm just kidding.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
Yes, good evening, sir.
My name is Bruce Reese. I'm with Legacy Engineering. This is the president of Legacy Engineering and happens to be my daughter.
Hey, how are you guys?
All right, good evening.
So she's disrespectful. I'll have a discussion with her later, but right now, she's the president.
Okay.
There's been some great questions raised, and we appreciate that. Let me see if I can get a couple of quick answers. There was an environmental site assessment done. Property's very clean. There are wetlands on the property. They've been delineated, no impact, so those kinds of things, just to kind of get out of the way. I'm not sure where to go with VDOT. That's been an interesting process, and we have gone back and forth between, I think they really wanted a connection that we proffered out, and I'm not sure they've gotten over not being able to get that connection, and so we have been negotiating with them as to what is the best and safest opportunity out on our connection to the road. I can tell you that it is not warranted, a left-turn lane, a right-turn lane, a right taper, none of which are warranted by VDOT's own standards, but they are making a strong recommendation, and we tend to listen to strong recommendations. We will continue to work with them. Right now, we show a taper, which allows you to get out of the through lane to make a right turn into the property. It doesn't meet all of VDOT's turn lane standards, but it does allow an automobile to get out of the through lanes in a protected motion to turn into the site. We will continue to work with VDOT, and with luck, we will get a recommendation for approval from them. Right now, they have made some recommendations, and we are trying to come to a conclusion that will satisfy everybody, including the safe entrance to this project for the residents. Any other questions? We're happy to answer. I, we can talk DEQ for just a minute. That's also been a trying process. We have gone back and forth with DEQ. We have not changed the design of the Stormwater Management Facilities since August. They have remained consistent, yet we continue to get comments from DEQ asking us to tweak this, change that, and we've made accommodations right up until the meeting this evening, but we haven't gotten them to sign off on the plan yet. We understand that we can't have a land disturbance without having DEQ sign off. We will make sure that that happens, but what you are seeing now on the plan is, I'm 99% sure, exactly what's going to get built. What we're trying to do is make sure that we get the notes on this plan that DEQ is asking us to do. And more than happy to answer any other questions, and Sarah is probably in a better position to answer those. This has been her plan from the beginning, and so if it's a difficult question, I'll certainly turn it over to her.
Okay, smart man. Do we have any questions? Start with Mr. Price.
I just had a simple question, and just something that just I was thinking about is the interpartial connections that you have. What are the vehicles per day that those roads are designed for, like for future capacity? In other words, if you do make that connection, how much traffic is going to be going, you know, sometimes people don't like people going through their subdivision, but if the roads were designed, let's say, as 31 units, there's maybe 310 or so vehicle trips, you know, the road section that's there, is it more than that? Is it 500 or 1,000 or what?
It is, so it's up to 2,000 vehicles per day on the typical road design standard, and then you don't go up from that. The next category is 2,000 to 4,000, and that would require a wider section of the street. So the street width should be 24 feet wide across, which will accommodate up to 2,000 vehicles.
That's for the interpartial connections as well as the main road?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Okay.
On the taper, just to close that out, I guess, are you looking at 100-foot or 200-foot, or you still have to work that out with VDOT?
So we're trying to compromise with VDOT because, as we mentioned, it's not required, and so our compromise was, okay, we'll give you 100-foot taper instead of the 200 feet that they were asking for as that compromise, and we still have not reached a final agreement with them. We're still working through it, so...
Okay. Let me ask you about parking. You allow on-street parking inside the development?
Um, I don't believe the street, no, these streets are not wide enough for on-street parking.
Yeah, I don't know if the development like this, if there is a required number of parking spaces that have to be provided. I mean, is there, do you know, if you have to have a certain number of parking spaces provided, and then how many parking spaces do you have given your design?
Not typically for single-family detached, because you assume that they're going to park in a garage and/or driveway.
Yeah.
And so in this case, the driveways are very, very long, and there'll be garages on every unit, so that's not typically a requirement for a single-family detached.
Okay. I did notice in the graphic that the driveway seemed to be kind of lengthy, so you figure at least four cars in the driveway? Because you know, these days, most people use the garages for storage and not for putting cars in.
Correct. It's 45 feet is the front BRL, and so your, all of your houses are going to be set back to that 45 feet, so you could double-stack the cars there, assume 20 feet for the length of the car, and too wide if you really wanted to.
Okay. You have about 40% open space. You going to provide any open space amenities for the residents, like, you know, picnic tables or playgrounds or any, you know, pavilions, anything like that?
I will defer that to the builder. We will be providing the pedestrian trail as required by the proffer. I don't believe they have any plans for any additional amenities at this time.
Okay, and I don't guess there's a county requirement that they provide any amenities? On that trail, so is that designed so kids can walk to school over to Bell Avenue?
I believe that was the intent of the proffer, was to allow access for kids without providing the vehicular access that, you know, would have been something that we would have been required to do per VDOT. We actually had to get a waiver so that we didn't make that connection. I think that compromise was trying to allow the pedestrians to still get access to the subdivision to the south by that pedestrian trail.
All right. I mean, this is... All right. I mean, this is likely to generate at least some school kids, so how about a school bus? I mean, have you thought about how kids would get to a school bus, or how a school bus would get in there to pick up kids? I mean, have you talked about that to the school system or whoever else you need to work that out?
So VDOT does contemplate that with the review and approval of the plan, and all the streets in the subdivision are required to be able to have buses that can come in and turn around. So the cul-de-sacs that you see here are designed such that the bus can fully turn around in the cul-de-sac and then leave.
Just one last thing. This will be run by an HOA?
Yes.
Okay.
There will be an HOA.
All right. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thanks.
Okay. Ms. Thornhill?
Okay, so when you do overlay the sidewalk onto the plan?
Mm-hmm.
Is it going to cross the driveway exit, obviously, but is that part, what's that going to do to the amount of space you park your cars? Is the car going to hang over the sidewalk?
So the sidewalk will likely be within the right-of-way or just outside. It's going to be five feet in width. It should not impact the ability to still park two cars deep. Yes, because it's 45 feet back for your setback, sidewalk's five feet, so you still have 40 feet-
Forty feet.
-beyond the back of the sidewalk to park the vehicle.
Okay. Because some of we see where the car is right over top of the sidewalk, and it's like, why?
That's definitely a problem, and we-
But you're going to overcome that.
Yeah, yeah, and it's known in the development community when you're doing design to allow for a car to park on the backside of the sidewalk, so it's not blocking it, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And, Mr. Chairman, the board actually, oddly enough, just approved an ordinance last night that actually officially restricts someone from parking on the sidewalk, so. So the sheriff's office could actually enforce that now, so.
Or not kneel.
Not kneel, no, the sheriff's office, yeah.
Okay.
And to answer Commissioner Price's question earlier, there is a minimum single-family requirement, but it's just for two cars. So most of that, as Sarah mentioned, it would be accommodated by the garage, so.
Okay. Thanks, Sarah. Anyone else? Doug? No, go ahead, Doug.
My name is Dr. Z. I just had a couple of simple questions. So the sidewalk will be outside the right-of-way and maintained by the HOA or VDOT?
We're going to try to keep it within the right-of-way, but we've got a shoulder and a ditch and a sidewalk, so it may straddle that right-of-way line, in which case there will be easements to accommodate it.
Okay. Because I know VDOT won't accept any sidewalk easements anymore, unlike the whole state. So I was just curious. Are there going to be, last question, are there going to be streetlights in here or no?
No, none proposed.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Now, Mr. Burke? Mrs. Ziegler usually closes.
All right. A couple of questions. First of all, you talked about VDOT status. My reading the case here said that VDOT approved this. Is that true or not true?
It's, Mr. Zieg, that's a complicated question this time around. The reason why it's complicated, and they've done the best job to try to answer it, is that the turn and taper is, they can't require it.
Right.
So they're recommending it strongly, as Mr. Reese said, so that's why it hasn't been officially approved, because VDOT still wants to get some type of taper.
So we don't-
If we force them to probably approve this plan without that, they would have to approve the plan without that.
Okay, but right now, we don't have a document from VDOT that says this is approved.
And the reason why is because the applicant has been entertaining the recommendation for that taper, so.
Gotcha, okay. Other question, you talked about no parking on the street. Is that getting forced through the HOA? How does that happen?
That's going to be up to the sheriff. We don't have the ability to control how parking is accommodated within the VDOT right-of-way.
But you at least can tell the people they can't, wouldn't the HOA, could you put something in there, at least make the people aware that this was never designed to park on streets?
Well, and one of the proffers has a requirement for the formation of an HOA, and so there will be documentation associated with that. And, Mr. Fisher, I'm assuming that he normally would put some kind of language in that-
Got to, sir, got to speak into that microphone so that it's being recorded and all too, so that, so that we-
Yes, sir, the HOA documents would outline no parking on the street.
Go ahead, speaking.
Yes, the HOA documents would restrict parking on the street.
And your name?
Notified. I'm Christopher Fisher. I'm with DRB Homes, the applicant.
I heard Fisher.
Yes, Christopher.
Christopher?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
And my last question is, and this is probably just how things have progressed, but in the package, there was a document or a picture that looked like this that showed one cul-de- or two cul-de-sacs but not connected. Your drawings here show two cul-de-sacs connected. Is that the plan?
This plan, it's, yeah, yes.
Okay. Two cul-de-sacs connected.
I'm sorry, yes, that is the plan, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
If I could just follow up on the parking.
All right, so there's not a lot of extra space within the development. So let's say somebody has, let's say it's Thanksgiving, and a number of residents have family over, and the parking for a given house, for several houses, spills out from the driveway or the garage. Where are all the extra people going to park if they can't park on the street?
Mr. Price, they'll park on the street.
Okay.
I, I'm convinced if I invited my family over and I only had room for two cars in my driveway, I would probably say to them, yeah, just park on the curb, don't block the road, but park on the shoulder.
Yes. And hopefully nobody will call the sheriff on Thanksgiving. All right. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anyone else?
So there's no curb that they're going to?
No, ma'am.
Right, right. Just like the other part of, yeah, okay.
There's kind of places, and I have a feeling that I doubt the sheriff would be making his rounds on Thanksgiving Day to see who he could pick up, but who knows?
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And I think when we look at the HOAs and patrolling those kinds of things, and we see that in every one of them, you all have asked some good questions, but when it's people who, or residents or homeowners who abuse it, that's why you have all these things in order, because a lot of people, you say the parties and the things like that, and, I mean, you see that all the, all the time, so.
I don't think the HOA, I think it's going to be, it's a state road, though, right? It's going to be the state standard, so it'll be a state road. So the HOA won't control it, it will be the sheriff, right?
Strictly, sure. Okay. You hear that, Sam? Were we right with, okay, good. All right, now, we will, yeah, see, I turned it back there. She's shaking her head in agreement to. We now open the public hearing. Is anyone who would like to speak to this application, please raise your hand, be recognized by the chair? Okay. Seeing none, we now close the public hearing. Commissioners, ask questions, and hopefully we got everything answered, and if not, is there any other discussion?
Let me just ask Sam for this point. So the street can be to VDOT standards, but be a private street, and VDOT's still not on it or be responsible for maintaining it, correct?
In this case, this will be a publicly maintained VDOT street.
Okay.
And designed as such.
All right, good.
Sure. Anything else? Chair entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Ms. Thornhill.
To make sure I cover everything here. So I would move that we take the case and request North Ridge Estate subdivision, final construction plan be recommended for approval to the Board of Supervisors, and it should include a revised site plan that has the sidewalks on it, and staff will be the governing body to make sure those things are done. And however they work it out with VDOT is what I would recommend, they'll work that That's it.
And other-
DeQ approval.
The other proffers should go with it, and then the DEQ approval should be finalized.
I think we got everything covered there. Any other discussion? Do we have a second?
Second.
I just have a comment real quick.
Now, perfect time.
Sorry. Hold up. I'm just saying, are we saying that we understand that they're willing to offer a minimum of 100-foot taper at this point?
I'm not including that. I'm going to let them be the judge to work it out with VDOT, because they don't have to do it.
Right. Okay, good. That was just a question.
Good, no, good question, good question. Any other?
Mr. Chairman, so let me just ask, so there are a number of outstanding issues here. I mean, would it make sense to have them fix those and then come back, and then we approve or disapprove?
That's another option for the planning commission. I don't think you're going to see a great deal of change, other than just securing those last approvals. They should not have to change the lot layout, the road layout, any of the major tenants that we're charged to really look at, and they're going to be required to get those approvals anyway. And the reason why I say that is, one, they can't build that entrance without a VDOT permit.
Yeah.
And they can't get a land disturbance without DEQ permitting. So I'm comfortable, if the planning commission is comfortable with moving forward, but that's certainly another avenue, so.
Those changes will have to be made before this goes to the board? This goes to the board, right?
It'll go to the board, and most likely, a lot of those will get a lot closer, and the board will have the same decision that you all have tonight if they're not realized completely at that point, so.
Okay.
The board could conditionally approve it as well, and they have in the past, so.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor, aye?
Wait, wait a second.
We had, we had a second.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Yeah, okay, we had a second. That's why Walter was just in time for any other discussion, okay? So, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Get them all in. Okay, all right. We will send it forward to the board with recommendation of approval. Okay. Now, Sam, any other business?
No, Mr. Chairman, that was all the business we had scheduled for, but I did want to make a quick announcement. The comprehensive plan was officially adopted last night, so we have a new 2023 comprehensive plan to reference, use, and I appreciate all of your hard work on that over the past year and a half, and the board did too. So the board worked on it for a lot less time than you all did, but we got it approved, so.
That was the whole intent?
Yes.
Yes, for them to work through it, have to spend a lot less time than we are. So we're not going to hold anything up, any other discussion? Doug, anyone got anything else? Being none?
Mr. Chairman, I move adjourned.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.